All right, good evening, everyone. I am Mayor Shelley Carlson. The Morehead City Council welcomes public input on issues listed on the agenda or of general community interest, time and council permitting. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each. If you would like to address the council during the meeting, please fill out a form provided by the city clerk, and we will call you up during the citizens addressing the council item on the agenda. You'll need to state your name and if you are a Morehead resident. If comments were submitted to the clerk prior to the meeting via email or phone, those comments will be entered into the record. For more information on participation, please visit the council meetings page on the City of Morehead website at moreheadmn.gov. We, the Morehead City Council, collectively with gratitude acknowledge the sacred land the City of Morehead is built upon. We acknowledge the people who have resided here for generations and recognize that the spirit of the Doktora, Ojibwe, Mati and all indigenous communities permeate this land. And with that, for our January 27, 2025 meeting, if we could have a roll call, please.
President.
Nicole Mattson. Heather Niesemeyer.
Here.
Emily Moore.
Here.
Deb White.
Here.
Lisa Borgan.
Here.
Sebastian McDougal.
Here.
Chuck Hendrickson.
Mayor Shelley Carlson.
Here.
And for those who are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Over here now.
Great, and City Manager Molly, do we have any amendments to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, we have a request to move item 15A to the February 10 city council meeting agenda.
That item will be moved. Moving on to the consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move Niesemeyer.
Wait seconds.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Moving on to recognitions and presentations, we have some pretty amazing recognitions tonight. The first one is the McKnight Foundation Heart of Community Award honorees, Yoxim and Iman, and I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Lisa Bodie.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. As Mayor Carlson said, we are remarkably and yet unremarkably, we have two statewide honorees of only seven in the state of the Virginia McKnight-Binger Heart of Community Awards. We're very fortunate to be home to two incredible people that were honored with this recognition, and we wanted to lift them up and celebrate with them. So congratulation to Iman Yasin and Yoxim Gunaratney. They're both here with us tonight. So I'll give you a little bit of background on each of them and invite them forward. Iman Yasin is a tireless advocate for immigrants, refugees and others living on the margins in the Fargo-Morehead area. An immigrant from Iraq who came to the United States with few possessions, she believes education is the path to success. She earned an associate's degree and then a bachelor's degree in social work, and she has applied her knowledge to assist other newly arriving people in our community. Her colleagues say she walks alongside people to deliver what they need, be it support to complete paperwork, or to obtain housing, food, clothing, or mental health services. They also note that she does her work with grace, dignity, compassion, and pride in being a Morehead resident. So that's Iman. Want to come forward?
I am truly honored, and I cannot say just thank you so much for everyone, and this is recognition. Thank you so much again. Thank you.
And then the other honoree is Yoxim Gunaratney. And Yoxim, I've known for more than 30 years. She has empowered countless individuals, strengthened our community, and inspired people to embrace diversity and equity across the globe. When the nonprofit organization Cultural Diversity Resources started in the Morehead-Fargo area in 1994, Yoxim took charge as the organization's executive director and has been at the helm ever since, developing programs to support employment, financial literacy, diversity education, bilingual interpreter services, nonprofit management and entrepreneurship training to increase knowledge, skills, and community engagement for quality living in our community. Colleagues say that her personal journey from Malaysia to Australia to Morehead, Minnesota, has affirmed her understanding of the interconnectedness of global, national, and local issues, and the value of giving back to community wherever you are. So congratulations, Yoxim, and if you'd like to say a few words?
Wow, I couldn't believe I made it. I was caught in the train just in time. Many thanks to you and to the City of Morehead for this honor in recognition of my Heart of Community Award at McKnight Foundation that just happened last year in November 2024. I'm also pleased to say that I am honored to live in Morehead in Clay County since 1986. So you know I'm only 30 years old, right? 39 years old, okay? And I'll repeat the 30 again later on, too. I came here when my husband Shelton was offered a job at MSUM as a professor of communications. And along with that, my two kids, a son and a daughter, attended schools in Morehead and graduated from college and also doing really well in jobs. So therefore, I would say, the City of Morehead has a big impact on my personal and professional life. There's no doubt about that. Why would I come to a place like this when I was living in Australia for 10 years and the weather is like California? I'd like a sense of humor here. When my husband told me we were coming to Fargo-Morehead area, I have no clue what this place is, and people told me I would not need a refrigerator. And I was wondering, what the hell is going on? Now I realize there's some truth in it. In the winter, it is really cold, you could use a garage as the refrigerator, and by the way, I've done it before, particularly when you're lack of space in the fridge. But I also want to share now that the Fargo-Morehead community leaders hired me to be the Director of Cultural Diversity, very honored, in 1994. Again, I have just turned 30 years old in service. So, very blessed, because I feel very blessed, when you look back to all of us who are sitting here, we have housing, we have a job, and we have financial stability and security. And living in a good neighborhood, by the way, because Fargo-Morehead area is a very safe and good place despite the cold, but the people are very warm here. That's how we stayed, right? So having that and living in this neighborhood has really fostered a sense of compassion to give back and to make a difference in the community while I'm living here, wherever I am. So I want to say a little bit about cultural diversity, because I'm not a marketer, but I would take this opportunity to share with you, since I've been here for 30 years, right? So a few minutes more. CDR has a goal, it's a nonprofit, and it will come back to tell you what Morehead stands for. The goals are, I think, four things. In Fargo-Morehead, we're addressing critical needs, and the needs, we know at this time is self-sufficiency, whether it's clothing, food, transportation, housing, and we do more in terms of self-sufficiency, in terms of food and, you know, clothing, and also employment. The second one is to really foster social change. And that change, I think I'm focused on, is to elevate poverty. Now, we can do a lot of esums, whatever you want to talk about it, and we're all human beings, I focus on poverty. And we became, when the COVID hits, an Americal Vista sponsor on anti-poverty. Americal Vista is America in service to America. It is the equivalent to Peace Call overseas, but we became a sponsor locally here. I'm very lucky, because we really help to focus on economic opportunities, and we have to pick, and we picked jobs to help them find jobs and financial literacy, and the secondary one is really youth development or youth education. So now, the third one is really interesting, is to strengthen our community. It foster a sense of belonging and solidarity by really giving opportunities for volunteerism or community engagement. I want you to remember that CDR was the founder of Pangia Cultivator Cultures, and we started in 1994, but by 2010, we partnered with the Historical Society of Clay County to do the Pangia Cultivator Council. They do a wonderful job. And by the way, we started in 1994, 30 years ago, with 500 people, and I did it in different schools. But in 2020, I feel very strongly that we need to partner, and that's where the Historical Society of Clay County came in. And you know, last year, in November, we had it always, you know how many people turn up? Almost 1,500. We're going to go close to 2,000. It has been a very popular exhibit food, exhibits, ethnic food, and also performances. It is an opportunity to interact and have dialogue among the different cultures, and I think it is working, because we enjoy our food and yet we have a chance to see the performances and have, you know, conversation. The other one, the fourth one, which I will not forget, and City of Morehead did an excellent job, because I've lived here for 38 years, and I saw a lot of housing going up, a lot of business going up. There's a lot of development, thanks to the mayor and also the city manager and all of you. So my goal also at CDR is to drive the economic growth, because we have a part to do in making sure that we contribute to workforce development. We know we need skilled workforce and all those things. We help that if we can. Education, in some ways, in the after-school, very involved in some of the Promise Fellow that we have at the Morehead School right now, or whatever after-school activities that we could have. I'm a strong believer in extension, and we would work with them on a couple of things, particularly 4H program and after-school program, because those are the wonderful program. And in addition, we also partner with the cooking facility SNAP program. It teaches people to cook and eat healthy. Those are things that we partner with, too. And so, driving the economic growth in terms of workforce, education, and healthcare with the COVID, we are, you know, always contacted by the Clay County Public Health to provide all kinds of masks or vaccination or information. So that remains very, very important. And since 2021, this is interesting, I know we are nonprofit, but we will approach to partner with a neighborhood development center that creates the global market in St. Paul, Minneapolis area, and we conduct it. Based on the contract with us, we conduct small business training, basically to encourage BIPOC or anyone living in the Clay County area, the contract is strictly for Morehead, to provide 12 classes of small business training, and not only that, we also help to get lending loans, because it's very difficult to get loans, and so we're part of that. And the other third one is definitely technical assistance on an ongoing basis. So those gives you some idea of what we do. But I want to end by saying that nonprofit organizations, not just culture diversity, are often the unsung heroes of our community. If you look at what we do, we are not the institutions that you think of, you know, Clay and Cass County, all those are big ones and job service, don't get me wrong, they play an important part, but they also play a very hidden kind of unsung hero part, too. We work to address pressing social issues, and we want, in some ways, to improve the lives of those in need, and so that's what we are good for. So I hope that the City of Morehead will continue to play a role, and you continue to play the role of shaping the fabric of Morehead society in a positive way, and that will be very good, because if you don't, we'll be telling you what we should be doing. And so some of your budget and some of your community planning for the long term will take into account some of those things. But thanks again for the opportunities. It's really our honor to be in City of Morehead, and if there's any need to your help, don't hesitate to call Culture Diversity or the nonprofits that work with us. Thank you.
So I'm just going to stand here, because I am going to be doing the next set of recognitions, but I think you all should know that this came about because of Iman's husband, Jim McInnes, who started emailing me, I think in November, and said, hey, did you know? And having two amazing women, and then Yoxim just shows already left, oh, now you're going to come back, okay. To have two amazing women out of seven people that were given this award across the entire state of Minnesota, and two of them from our own community, is pretty amazing, and that's pretty much sums up what Jim said in his emails to me, and I couldn't have agreed more. And I think the other thing that struck me when both Iman and Yoxim spoke is it wasn't about themselves, it wasn't about what they did, it was about the people that they served and how they helped, and how their organizations helped. And that shows what selfless people that they both are. So, so proud to have you in this community, and congratulations again for this award and recognition. And thank you for emailing me, Jim. So this next set of recognitions is to recognize employees of the City of Morehead who have really kind of gone above and beyond, I think. Each year, we recognize employees for designated milestones in service, beginning at five years of service, but, and these happen at the end of the year, and the individual department directors are the ones that are typically recognizing all staff with the 2024 service milestones, but today, we are going to recognize individuals with 25 or more years of service with the city. And when we think about these individuals who have given over two decades of themselves and their families have given this time to the city, I think about the word dedication. The definition of dedication is someone who is committed to a goal or a task and willing to put in the effort to achieve it, which is always like that tagline at the end of somebody's job description, and other duties as assigned, right? The more you're in a position, longer, all of a sudden, the duties get longer, and these are individuals who just take them on and just make them part of their DNA of the work that they do. Dedicated people are motivated by a strong sense of purpose and a desire to make a positive impact. And each and every one of you, in every single year, every single day that you've given to the city, you have made a positive impact, and we can't thank you enough, and we owe you our deep gratitude and appreciation. So with that, we are going to call up these folks and publicly acknowledge them, and then everybody, you have to, you can't sneak out. And then everybody, you have to, you can't sneak out, you have to stay here, we're going to have a group picture. So our first employee to be recognized is Dr. Bob Zermeman. Bob is currently our Director of Engineering and has been with the city for more than 35 years. He was initially hired by the city in September of 1989, which happens to be the year I graduated from high school. So, yes, love that year, and I will always remember now. I will always remember that year now. So if you want to come up and receive your certificate. Got to know Bob really well with all the work on the diversion and all my endless questions about the tuminous overlays, things like that. I just mostly like to say that. The next employee is Darcy Thon. Darcy is currently the Biosolids Program Manager for the wastewater slash stormwater department and has been with the city for more than 30 years. He was initially hired by the city in June of 1994, so 30 years. So Darcy, if you want to come up. And 90, I was already graduated from college by 94, so, you know, I was already working with you in some way, shape, or form in the professional realm. Our next employee recognition is for Michael Schroeder. Mike is currently our Park Maintenance Manager in the Public Works Department and has been with the city for more than 30 years. He was initially hired by the city and also in May of 19, in 1994. And fun fact, my dad actually knew Mike before I did, back in the day when my dad and his landscaping business built a portion of, was it Village Green or? Nine, the back nine of Village Green, yep. So, so my dad always wants me to say hi to you, like literally every time I see you, I'm supposed to say hi to you from my dad. So hi, Mike. Let's see here. Our next employee recognition is for Shannon Monroe. Shannon is currently our Chief of Police with the, the Police Department and has been with the city for more than 30 years. Again, he started in May of 1994, so we had a rash of hires in 94. Do you want to say that? Shannon, do you want to say that? Okay, all right. So Shannon was just saying that coincidentally, Yook Sim was the lead of the committee who helped to write the mission statement of our Morehead Police Department, so, back in 1994. So that's pretty cool. And of course, she already left, so we can't even thank her for that. So our next employee recognition is for Rob Matheson. Rob is currently a Police Sergeant First Class with the Morehead Police Department and has been with the city for more than 25 years. He started in February of 1999. Oh, I missed it. Print is small. So fun fact about Shannon and Rob, my husband was Shannon's partner back in the day when he was a Police Sergeant with Shannon, and then I believe that Rob took over his Sergeant number, 206. So, way to keep the number going, really good and strong. What? Oh, yes, my husband was his Sergeant before. Well, I don't think my husband retired. He's never, now he really wishes he would have stayed with the Police Department. Let's see here. And Tom, I accidentally skipped over you, so we're going to go back up to the 35 years. And this is for Tom Sop. Tom is Assistant Superintendent for the Wastewater Stormwater Department and has been with the city for more than 35 years. He was hired in May of 1989. And Tom and I both have lake places right in the same camp, kind of campground together, so he is always the go-to for wastewater questions there as well. And the following individuals were not able to attend this evening, but we do want to recognize them for their significant years of service and their dedication to the City of Morehead. Neil Penner, who is the Park Maintenance Crew Chief in the Morehead Public Works Department and has been with the city for 35 years, started in May of 1989. Jeff Larson, who is a former police officer, narcotics, narcotics team lead with the Police Department and had been with the city for 25 years. He began in January of 1999. Eric Berg is a fire captain in the Fire Department, has been with the city for 25 years, hired in January of 1999. And Jason Dwar is a firefighter in the Fire Department, been with the city also for 25 years. He was hired in 19, August of 1999. And Chief Wallen, who is currently the Fire Chief for the Fire Department, he's been with the city for over 30 years. He started in April of 1994, but is not feeling well tonight, so was unable to be with us. So congratulations to all of you employees for your continued dedication and this incredible milestone with the city. If you all want to come up here and take a group picture.
And I'll just say while the mayor's making her way back to the chair, so we don't have this dead silence, so I was an intern in Morehead in 1997 and 98. So I, I was, I'm sure I was annoying to every one of you back then, and I've held steady, and so, you know, I want to just say thank you for holding us up. You know, they say that, you know, you hire smart people so that they can tell you what to do. So I wasn't part of hiring any, any of you, and, but I have appreciated how you've told us what to do, how you've taught us how to do it. You're all so good, you're so smart. Even as we were going through this, I was thinking about just the, the good nature within all of you, like there's a great sense of humor among the people that work here. There are these unusually strong work ethics, and you're just all such a joy to work with. And so thanks for sticking around and serving Morehead all these years. I mean that.
All right, so getting back to the agenda, we have approval for the January 13, 2025 meeting minutes, so I have a motion to approve that agenda item. Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. And we do have one individual who would like to address the council at this time. Ms. Quiggle, if you want to come up to the podium and to give you some information on how this works, you'll get three minutes to address the council. This little button will be green the whole time. When it turns red, that means your three minutes are up and you'll need to wrap it up. And this is just an opportunity for you to speak to the council, but the council, we don't have like a Q and A, so it's just information. If it's something that we might be able to address tonight, I will either have my city manager or assistant city manager will go out and speak with you in the hallway. So you can go ahead and please state your name and if you're a resident of Morehead.
My name is Beth Ann Quiggle, and I'm a resident of Morehead for 64 years. And I'd like to speak on behalf of the homeless in our town. I became homeless myself for a while, but I also grew up here, so I had Christian friends and, that I ended up living with for a while, but I was on the street for four days. And so I got to see things that I did not like, that I saw. And one of them was the shelter that we have in Morehead called MICA Mission. Now, it was Churches United. And, and they had no air conditioning. When I was ministering there, I was also going there and eating with them before I became homeless. And they had no air conditioning, and the people that were working on the air conditioning couldn't work on the air conditioning because it was so hot in there. And then there was flies, and then it became, where there was 61 people in the building this winter, and it, it can take 140, and they were turning people away. So I was kind of alarmed on how it was being ran. So what I'm bringing to you guys is we need to address our homeless. And the lady over here, the Yasan, was speaking belonging. That's all they want is to belong to the community, a sense of belonging and feeling like they, that we care about them, and give them hope to move on with their traumas, addictions, or whatever their issues are. And so I'm just coming to you because I really believe that we have a location in Morehead that we can use that isn't being used. It is called Goldmark, not Goldmark, excuse me, I used to live with them, Golden Living that isn't being used. Why can't we get rid of the old building that is decayed and move into a better building? So that is what I'd like to see, and I hope and pray that it happens. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. And we appreciate you bringing this information to us. We have been in numerous conversations and have had numerous meetings with the new Executive Director of MICA's Mission, our Churches United. Lot of conversations about space and the ability to connect with folks and serve individuals who are currently unhoused. And I know that that has been brought up, but there's, you don't just become a homeless shelter, there's a lot of zoning and different certifications and things like that that you have to go through. So just be assured that we are having those conversations, so, thank you. So ma'am, we're, this, we're in a meeting, so, yep, and we appreciate you bringing this, and I think that those are a lot of the questions that would need to be asked of the Executive Director, obviously we don't run their program. So moving on to the next item on the agenda would be 12A, which is a resolution to approve our appointment of our Recreation Director. And I will turn this portion of the agenda over to City Manager Molly.
Good evening, I guess, and thank you, Mayor, council members. So tonight, you're being asked to approve the appointment of Sean Brandonberg as Recreation Director in Morehead. Sean is here, there Sean and Amy. Let me just start, I'll give you a little background by saying this is a win for Morehead. Sean has shown his commitment, collaborative spirit, energy, knowledge, and great skill to be a Recreation Director in Morehead. A little history about Sean. One of his first jobs while a student at Concordia College was as a seasonal mower and trimmer for Morehead Parks in the summer months, so he knows, he knows our place, he grew, he grew up here. After graduation, Sean continued his education in sports and facility management at the University of Northern Colorado, and eventually relocating to Billings, Montana, and worked with the City of Billings Department of Parks and Recreation and Public Lands. After five years in, in that role, Sean came home, back to Morehead to accept a role as Coordinator of Youth Outreach at Morehead State University. Sean has served as a member of the Morehead Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and is currently a Certified Parks Recreation Professional with the National Recreation and Parks Association. He's a positive person, longstanding relationships with many in Morehead, in the metro area, and across the Midwest. There are certainly a lot of great things on the horizon for Morehead's Department of Parks and Recreation. I'm really excited to introduce Sean to you tonight. And so with that pursuant to Chapter Six, Section, well, Section Six and subdivision Three of the Morehead City Charter, which states that the city manager is to select department heads on the basis of merit and fitness and is subject to approval by the city council. I recommend the appointment of Sean Brandonberg to serve as Morehead's next Director of Recreation.
All right, thank you, Mr. Molly, and I would be looking for a motion to approve such agenda.
Second, Nisa Meyer.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
I was going to say we could all fight about appointing Sean. If I may, Madam Mayor, I want to appreciate all of the work that went into selecting candidates. I am delighted to see Sean here with the possibility of becoming our new director. I think as the city manager stated, it's a win for Morehead, and there is nothing but good energy that can come from new opportunities, and we've got lots of opportunities happening in Morehead. So I am delighted to see this recommendation.
Thank you. So there is a motion and a second, any other comments or discussion questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, unanimous appointment. So Mr. Brandonberg, welcome to Morehead, and if you would like to say a few words, feel free to get comfortable at the podium, because you'll be there many times in the next, in your career here.
Well, thank you for the warm introduction and reception from everyone. Mayor and council, I'm honored to be appointed as the next Recreation Director for the City of Morehead. I know there's some incredibly huge shoes to fill, as the previous director was here, I think for 27 years, Holly, 27 years of service, and seeing all the years of service out there, previous was, was inspiring and goes to show that it's a great environment here, people want to stay here and kind of build their families here. So I'm excited to, to get to work alongside a dedicated and fantastic team that's in place. I think the city manager nailed it, just hiring good people, and the city seems to have a reputation to do that. I look forward to working hard for Morehead residents and, and hoping we can expand recreation opportunities to those in the community. So very excited, thank you for your support, and yeah, just incredibly excited to, to get to work, so, thank you.
Awesome, thank you. And I do have to say that during the interview process, I was so impressed by your dedication to this community and how much you knew about the community, your energy and your openness to new ideas, and just also knowing that the people that are going to be working underneath you are people that can, I think one of the responses you talked about was you might not always have the best idea, but the team does, and that's how you lift others up, and it just really resonated. So thank you for accepting the position, and I can't wait to see someday when a future mayor gives you a certificate of 25 or 30 years of service.
You're not sticking around that long? No, thanks so much.
Yep, thank you. All right. Kind of a short agenda for this evening. We are already now down to mayor and council reports. Are there any council members who have reports from boards and committee meetings? Council member wait.
Actually, the first one I'll touch on that I think is appropriate, given our, the information that we got from our community member, is reminding folks about the Intergovernmental Retreat that'll be this Friday. And remember, this is a meeting that we have annually with our local government, from city government, both Morehead, Dilworth, county government, school districts, the Morehead School District, as well as DGF, and our state legislators. And the three topics that we will be covering this year will be homelessness, the opioid epidemic, and the Juvenile Psychiatric Center that the county is working on. And so, you know, with, fully recognizing that, for instance, that the issue of homelessness right now is really a very pressing issue, and so a chance for these different government entities to get together and entities to get together and really start talking about how we work collaboratively on solutions. Similarly, the, we will be discussing the opioid epidemic, and one of the things that we'll have there are folks from the Red River Recovery Initiative, and that's the Coordinated Opioid Overdose Response Group that's been working together the last few years. And so I also wanted to give an update on their most recent meeting. Couple of things, again, because we will probably hear more about it on Friday, but it'll give you a chance to hear some things that are happening in Morehead. Clay County received a grant for four large Sharp disposal bins, and this is one of the things that we've been talking about for a while, that there are places where we've had issues with needles that are left in parks or in public bathrooms. And so having these standalone kiosks, they've been doing it in Fargo, we haven't had them in Morehead, and so they will have the funding for that. And my understanding is that they will predominantly, if not exclusively, be in Morehead. We also have, they also received funding for the one program that will be used in Morehead, and that is the Opioid Naloxone Education Program, where they'll work collaboratively with pharmacists on education and screening, as well as put together 30 different one boxes that'll be, provide naloxone in high-risk areas. I also wanted to mention, one really good collaborative work that we do there is the OD mapping, and I wanted to thank Lieutenant Mike Detloff from Morehead Police Department for really running that. And one of the things that it allows us to do is to track together the information about overdoses in our community. And even just this week, one of the things that Lieutenant Detloff was able to do is get information out about some bad batches that may be out there, and so that now others can be on the lookout and let people know that there's an even greater risk. And so things like that, that are really helping us work collaboratively to address the crisis and to save lives. And similarly, they provided information about, and the data unfortunately was only for Cass County, but Cass County currently has one of the lowest Hep C transmission rates in the state. And I know there's been discussion of the Needle Exchange and Education Program and whether that should be sustained, and the evidence shows that it really has a big impact. And so compared to much smaller cities, Fargo actually has a very low, low rate of Hep C transmission, predominantly due to this program. And that's all I had to report, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember White. Councilmember Nisa Meyer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would also like to extend my appreciation for the City of Morehead staff, not only years of service, but our staff continually show good opportunities. It's nice to hear great things about city streets being cleaned, branches being picked up, Christmas trees being picked up. And so our city staff continually do a great job of showing the best of the best, and I would like to appreciate that. The upcoming event this week, we have Frosthavel Fun at the Frozen Fortress, so many Fs. It's this Saturday, February 1st, here at Viking Ship Park. There are both indoor and outdoor activities to participate in, like sledding, cross-country skiing, snow shoeing. All of this is put on by a collaboration with the Park, Morehead Parks and Rec, the Frosthavel team, as well as the historical and, oh, the museum here, I'm not going to get their whole name, sorry about that, because you can come inside and check out the exhibits while you're here as well during that event, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on Saturday, February 1st. We also, next week here at the Yum Kumps, have the Global Market. We heard one of our esteemed state award winners, Yook Sim, mention have been outstanding numbers that we've had at Pangaea just in these last coming years. Thousands of people coming. And so we have Global Markets on Tuesdays here at Yum Kumps, it's the first Tuesday of every month, which this coming Tuesday is February 4th. So stop, oh, second Tuesday, oh, I got the Tuesdays wrong, so it's the 11th. Oh, see? I'm good at writing things down, but I can't read my own handwriting, it's a terrible thing. So it's from 5:00 to 7:00, the second Tuesday of the month, February 11th. But there is also that same night, an event being held by the Historical Society for Land to Table, Food Stories from Clay County. As you may or may not know, I'm on the Food Commission, and I really think that lifting up and elevating our stories that we have heard throughout the centuries here in Clay County is really important, and also exploring our food energy here. I look forward to all of the events coming up this winter, and so I hope to see you out there.
Thank you, Councilmember Nisa Meyer. Any other council members have, Councilmember Borgan?
This thing to work, there we go, okay. So I did attend the Morehead Public Service Commission Meeting on January 21st. It was a fairly short meeting, and one action item was that a water rate study was approved a little bit earlier, I think it's a year earlier than planned, so that'll be happening this year. I also attended the Morehead-Clay County Joint Powers Authority on January 23rd, and that meeting basically involves reviewing some of the eminent domain and other property issues that go along with the diversion. There was no real controversies at that meeting. And then I also attended the Diversion Authority Meeting on January 23rd, along with the Mayor and Councilmember Hendrickson, who I think are a little more versed in what happened there, so I'm not going to really report. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Borgan. Any other council members have boards or committees to report on?
Alright, seeing none for the Mayor Report. I attended the MinDOT Highway 1075 Open House. For those who are interested in learning what MinDOT is proposing as far as some of the reconstruction on those areas of Morehead to go on the MinDOT site, it has some good information, and none of it is going to be happening until after 11th Street is done, so we're just going to move construction from one part of town to a different part of town. But for those folks who are constantly asking questions about a street that is a MinDOT street, and they would be the ones that would be redoing it. The City Manager, our Governmental Affairs Director and myself, met with House Representative Keeler on January 24th to discuss legislative issues. We reiterated Morehead's number one priority, which is our flood mitigation request. The total with in-town flood mitigation and out-of-town Clay County projects is 60 million. For the City of Morehead, our specific request is 60 million for seven flood, or for seven lift stations. I also spoke at the Immigrant Development Centers Capital Campaign for the new cultural mall that will be built hopefully sometime soon in Morehead, January 2nd, at Microsoft Commons over in Fargo. It was a pretty well-attended event and really kicking off that capital campaign for the cultural mall. As Councilmember Borgan said, we had a number of committee meetings for the diversion, with the finance meeting on January 22nd, and the full board meeting on the 23rd. Both the committee and the board approved our final 2025 budget, 424 million, 55,689 dollars. That is a working budget for 2025. Obviously, in a $3 billion project, the budget changes a little bit from year to year. And then last but not least, we did a weekly flood mitigation check-in with all of our partners that occurs on Friday mornings to discuss how the legislative process is going in regards to our flood mitigation request. And that is all I have, and I will turn it over to you, City Manager Molly.
No updates this evening, Mayor.
Alright. And with that, we do not have any new business, so it is 6:18, and we are adjourned. So good night, Morehead.